Buddy, tonight is Tuesday, November 23rd, and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. The time is 6:30 PM. We will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido is absent. Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here. Moving on to the second item, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a proposed add-on. Item number 12, which is request to create a Department of Public Works Director position.
Are there any other corrections?
Do you approve the agenda as corrected?
Trustee Oliver, did you have one more?
Yes, I got one. Can we take item 16, is it?
Yes.
And split that up into three separate votes?
Three separate agenda items?
Agenda items, is that the way you want to do it?
Do we do 16A, B, and C?
That's how we do it, yes.
Okay, I can make that adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding the proposed add-on. It struck me as, this is agenda item 12.
12 on the revised agenda?
12. In light of 12, I was wondering if number 13?
Yeah, I considered that. 13, which I don't remember which one is which now because of the way they're labeled. 13, when we get to the Water and Superintendent, I'll ask to amend it if we pass 12 to the Director position, and we'll substitute one for the other.
All right, so there won't be recruitment to fill the vacancy if we're going to vote to keep the position vacant in light of the Public Works Director position?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'd like to make a move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Any discussion on approving the agenda as corrected, amended? Okay, hearing none. Members, please vote. It was a motion by Treasurer Gillette, and seconded by Clerk Posey. That motion passes six to zero. All right, moving on to approval of the bills. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion on the bill run? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item four, approval of the previous meeting minutes from November 10th, 2021, and the closed session meeting minutes from November 10th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion on the previous meeting's minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the meeting minutes from November 10th and the closed session meeting minutes from November 10th. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to public comment. At this time, if you have any public comment to make on agenda items only, please approach the microphone on the right, and you will be called upon. Please state your name and address for the record. If anyone who is participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand, and you will be called upon. See no one present? Roger, is there anybody digitally?
No, sir.
Okay, no public comment on... Yes, ma'am, if you have a comment, could you please step to the microphone? Just give us your name and address for the record. And please remember, we have a three-minute time limit, just so you know.
No problem. My name is, I'm sorry. My name is Lisa Wrangeloff. I live at 19975 23 Mile Road. I'm not sure if I'm agenda number 19 or not. I figured I would ask a question now.
Are you the house next to the fire station?
Correct.
Then yes, that is the agenda item for your address.
Then I will wait until that moment.
This is the time.
Oh, this is the time? Okay.
I'll give you the extra 30 seconds. I don't want to cut you short.
Thank you. When our house was flooded by clean drinking water, the insurance agent sent out a settlement engineer who determined the house was structurally sound. It did not need to be torn down. Are any part of the building needed replacement? Parts of the drywall was removed and flooded floors because of the flooding. The insurance also checked for mold and other contaminants, which all passed. We have lived in the house the whole time. It has running water, bathrooms, AC, and heat, along with electricity and gas to run such items. I feel perfectly safe living in the house. I have no problems doing so. I have answered all the questions of the items that was brought up to me in the letter from the lawyers. So until then, I have no more information to give you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wish to comment on any agenda items? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda in its entirety?
Support.
Any discussion on the consent items? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve all of the consent agenda items. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to new business, we have item 11 from the Water and Sewer Department. It's a request to approve the partial refund for a construction permit fee for Strathmore condos, Phase Two, in the amount of $32,620.20. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. As already stated, Water and Sewers in front of you, requesting we approve a partial payment refund in that amount stated $32,620.20. Mr. Alloia has prepared a very well condensed, detailed, hold harmless agreement that explains this. I can definitely add some more to that if you'd like. I guess it's your choice, I guess. Mr. Alloia, can you give us a two-second summary of?
Sure.
Or I can do the two.
Sure. LC-26 owned the property. They sold it to Polte. Polte had placed the fees for inspections, advance fees, paid them into the township, but then Polte defaulted on the development, and it went back to Leoni. They had a settlement after a lawsuit. Leoni was claiming a return of those fees and said they were assigned in the lawsuit. We didn't see it in the agreement. And so I'd requested that they provide proof of that. They provided an updated assignment from Polte that confirmed that that was part of their settlement, and that the remaining fees go to Leoni. So the township has been reimbursed for all their expenses for the development. Leoni is being paid the fees, as agreed to between Polte and Leoni. And there's a hold harmless and indemnification, which says that we're relying on this assignment and this document. And if anybody comes and complains or makes any claim, that Leoni is going to indemnify us for that. So LC-26 is Leoni, by the way, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the partial refund for the construction permit fees for Strathmore condos, Phase Two, in the amount of $32,620.20. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Moving on to the Human Resources Department, item number 12. This is the proposed add-on. We have a request to create a Department of Public Works Director position. Mr. Tabaka is going to give us.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry. Is there a motion?
My apologies.
Support.
Second it, Leon.
No.
I think I moved.
You made, who made the motion?
He did. You're seconding it?
I'll second it, yeah.
Now, Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. The HR Department and Supervisor's Office is recommending that we combine the Facility and Grounds Department with the Water and Sewer Department in forming a Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. So as I explained in the board memo, after the last year of observation of our operations in trying to seek ways to make further improvements, I've come to the conclusion, as the person who these departments report to, that they would be better served under a single director. Currently, the Facilities and Grounds is a manager-level position, doesn't have a director that reports directly to me. For a lot of administrative reasons and functional reasons, that structure is a little unyieldy, and I think we'll get a lot better performance and a lot more efficiency out of having the two departments combined into one. Some of those efficiencies are sharing administrative staff, sharing of equipment, sharing of hourly personnel, and being able to line up the work that needs to be done with, you know, the staff as one unit. That's my two-second pitch. So anybody has any questions?
Any questions?
I guess I should make further that, you know, as described in the letter of understanding, this position has a higher range than our regular directors because they're absorbing two departments. I believe the increased salary is commensurate with the responsibility of running two departments. And also, if this were to pass, we will leave the Water Superintendent, Water and Sewer Superintendent position unfilled, and we will only be seeking to hire a new Public Works Director. Now I'm done. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Do you anticipate a reorganization of one or the other and elimination of any positions other than what's already been discussed?
No, I don't.
And it's my understanding that the township has always had these two separate departments. Is that correct?
As far as I know, in my history, yes. I believe, I don't know who can hear, who was here at the time, maybe, I believe at one time, Facilities and Grounds reported to Parks and Rec. Is that correct?
I don't remem-
Nancy's shaking her head, yes.
Yeah, that could be.
I think it was first brought on, and then it was split off after that. So I guess in some way, we're returning to a Director position.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that this is for efficiency, but it's not going to save the township any money. It's actually going to cost more. Is that correct?
It'll cost more in the Director's salary, but hopefully through the efficiencies gained. For example, the Secretary that was assigned to Facilities and Ground has been reassigned to somewhere else. Additionally, some former, well, some current Facilities and Ground staff, next month are being reassigned to Parks and Rec. So we've actually begun some of the reorganization that I've taken on administratively. So it's hard to put an exact number on it, but as far as the Director level position is concerned, that is correct, that that will be an increase in cost.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to create a Department of Public Works Director position. Members, please vote. That motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item 13, Mr. Tabaka. I'm sorry, I jumped right ahead of you. Hold on a second. Moving on to item 13, we have authorization, we're seeking authorization to initiate the recruitment process in the Water and Sewer Department. Is there a motion? This is-
Is this for the superintendent, though?
So just to be clear, Mr. Supervisor-
He's going to stay in a minute.
So are we skipping 13, going to 14?
Because you said we weren't going to do that if we-
Oh, you're right. I thought, I got the two mixed up. So item 13 would be recruitment process, let me scratch that off, for the Public Works Director position.
Mr. Chair, if we're going to skip that over, do we amend the-
Just to be clear, so 13 was going to be the Water and Sewer Superintendent position, but we're not-
On number 12, we created the position. Number 13, we now have to recruit for it. So we are, so I guess I'm seeking to amend the agenda. The agenda was only printed, it was only created with the recruitment process. I guess the name of the position was in the backup.
Okay. So would it be appropriate for me to make a motion to authorize the township to begin the recruitment process for the position of Department of Public Works Director?
Yes.
I will so make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Sorry, it was so confusing. I blame Roger. So, Mr. Tabaka, do we have anything to add?
Yeah, for number 14.
No, for 13.
13, no. Nope.
So the one thing I do want to add is, we believe in recruitment for this process, we'd like to take on a headhunter, so that this process is done very effectively. We did that with Mr. Box's position a year ago, and I believe we'll have more success, but.
I just want to repeat that this newly formed DPW position, again, would oversee Water and Sewer and the Maintenance Department, or the Facility and Grounds Department.
Right.
I just want to be clear. And the position would report into Mr. Frank Viviano.
Okay, any more, any questions on that?
Just a question on it. The new, them two combined, there'll be a Director of the DPW.
That's what we're recruiting for now.
But that'll bring in Facilities and Grounds.
Correct.
It'll bring in Water and Sewer.
Correct.
And there'll be a Director that they will-
No. There will not be a Director under the department head, so there will not be a Director, will there be a Director of Water and Sewer after we've-
The position exists because it's in the union contract, but the position will not be filled. So what we're asking to now do is recruit the Director of Public Works position.
DPW.
Correct.
So the Water and Sewer Superintendent position will not be filled.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that the position for DPW Director will be a union position, correct?
Correct.
And the union has agreed to the proposal to leave their position of Water Superintendent vacant?
They have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
You have a motion and support.
Okay, so there's no more discussion?
Oh, one last item. Is it within budget for the headhunter to recruit this position?
I don't think that's what Mr. Viviano meant by headhunting, right? I think Mr. Cusmano is asking if we're going to hire a headhunter. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I understand that there was a third party, I guess is the way it was phrased. I took it to be a headhunter.
I guess I was saying it's something we should consider.
Okay.
We haven't even looked into whether, what the fees on that would be. We would have to come back to the board if there was a fee that we had to approve.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to begin the recruitment process for Public Works Director. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item 14. It's a request to authorize the initiation of the recruitment process in the Water and Sewer Department. This is for a supervisor, correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. HR is requesting authorization to initiate the recruitment for a Water and Sewer Supervisor. The current employee has submitted his letter of retirement effective December 31st, 2021. This position, if approved, will be posted in compliance with the Ask Me CBA agreement. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and this is a budgeted item.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to initiate the recruitment process in the Water and Sewer Department for a new supervisor. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item 15. It's a rezoning request for residential one-family and local commercial and general commercial to a single zoning of general commercial on permanent parcel ID 0836452022, located on the northwest corner of Hall Road and Grashit in Section 36.
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board. The parcel in question, as you mentioned, is at the northwest corner of Hall and Grashit. The property currently has three different zoning categories, all within one parcel. Those categories are R1, C1, and C2, which represent residential, one-family, commercial, C1, and general commercial, C2. Any split-zone properties in the township become very difficult to develop. Having different zoning categories means they have different rules within the property. This one in particular is split-zoned as a result of being remnant pieces of old MDOT right-of-way. The petitioner, at this point, is seeking to rezone the property in its entirety to C2. And as I mentioned, it was once MDOT right-of-way. There was actually a bit of an off-ramp from southbound Grashit to westbound Hall. Those of you who've been around long enough may remember that. That is the area in question. And again, the petitioner is seeking to rezone the entire property to C2, which part of it already is C2, but part of it is also C1 and R1. The internal departments have reviewed and have no objection to the rezoning request, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this rezoning. And at this time, we are asking the Board to follow the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the rezoning to C2.
Thank you, Mr. Box. I think he just called some of us old. That's okay. Is there any questions? Okay, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the rezoning from R1, C1, and C2 to only C2 on permanent parcel ID 0836452022. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. All right, moving on to item 16, which is the item we amended at the beginning of the meeting. We have item 16A, which is a request to rezone residential one-family suburban to light industrial, located in Section 17 of Macomb Township. Do you have a motion?
Move on 16A?
Correct.
Support.
But move 16A.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board. So I know you've broken it into three separate votes. I'm going to talk about all of them at this point, just to give everyone a frame of reference what we're talking about. This is Phase Six of the rezoning to get rid of R1S. You have seen, the first five phases are already brought in front of you, and you have approved those five phases. Essentially, this rezoning allows landowners to continue living as is. It will not raise their taxes, and it will not prohibit a landowner from seeking a future rezoning, should they choose to apply for one. Within Phase Six, what we're seeing here is three separate sections with three separate zoning categories that were changing R1S2, or suggesting to change R1S2. Those being within Section 17, R1S2M1, or light industrial; in Section 20, R1S2R1, which is single-family residential; and in Section 28, R1S2CF, or community facilities. At the Planning Commission meeting, they did break this into three votes, similar to what Mr. Oliver just recommended we do here. And they did recommend approval of the properties in Section 20 and the properties in Section 28, and they recommended denial of the rezonings in Section 17, being the R1S2M1 properties. And at this time, we are asking that you follow the Planning Commission's recommendation on all of those.
Thank you, Mr. Box. So for item 16A, the Planning Commission has recommended denial. Do we have any questions or discussion on 16A? So we have a motion to rezone from R1S to M1, parcel located on Section 16. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver. Members, please vote. That motion fails zero to six. So the next item, then, would be 16B, as Mr. Box has already described. It's one-family suburban to residential one-family, located in Section 20 of Macomb Township. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
Mr. Box has already gone over this. Is there any other discussion or questions? The Planning Commission has voted to recommend approval of this item. Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Nevers, to move from R1S to R1, located in Section 20. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. And the last item of 16 would be 16C, which is a request to rezone residential one-family S to community facilities, located in Section 28. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Again, Mr. Box has already described the circumstances for this, and this item also was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to rezone from R1S to CF, property located in Section 28. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item 17, we have a request to approve tornado siren repairs in the amount of $11,370. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the Board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to make the necessary repairs for the tornado siren located at 21 North Avenue. During the annual maintenance inspections last week, it was discovered the control box was completely rusted through and in need of replacement. The attached quote provided by the vendor details the parts and the labor necessary for the repairs. Westshore Services Incorporated is currently the only vendor that does this type of work in the state of Michigan. They installed and have performed the yearly maintenance on all of the tornado sirens within the township and within the county. Therefore, it's my recommendation to have Westshore make the necessary repairs. It'll total cost of $11,370, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any questions or discussion?
I got one quick one. Does state or the federal help us pay for any of the sirens? Any of the equipment or maintenance? Any of the equipment or maintenance?
No, it's completely on the township.
It's on us. Not even the county?
No.
Okay.
Do we know how old that siren is?
I believe it was installed sometime two thousand two to two thousand three.
It's probably due for a significant repair.
Mr. Moore?
I have a couple of questions. Is Westshore performing the maintenance on the sirens?
Yes.
I, could you explain to me how it could be rusted through? If it's being inspected annually by Westshore? Do you have any idea? It was, and a follow-up question, was it operational?
It was operational. Last year, they did note that there was some deterioration of the box starting. However, they recommended that we continue to keep an eye on it. It would be able to get through the year. When they were there this year, it had deteriorated further to the point of replacement.
So it's my understanding that it was working when it was periodically tested. Is that correct?
They're tested the first Saturday of each month through the county at 1:00 P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the tornado siren repairs in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eighteen, we have a request to approve a resolution to adopt the residential road improvement project participation policy. So moved.
Second.
So the item, this item is the culmination of what we began some months ago with Chelsea Park subdivision. With the help of our attorney and with a lot of participation from our engineers and planners and, and the full-time electeds, we developed a policy that we believe is impartial and will gives us the opportunity to address some of our residential road problem, at least within so much as we can afford to do so each year. Happy to answer any questions anybody from the Board might have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to add to what you explained. The goal of this particular policy is that we can leverage county dollars to help fix residential roads. Our hope is that we can leverage the maximum amount the county will provide. They only provide two million dollars a year for all the townships in the entire county for, for replacing, you know, the worst-conditioned roads. In order to become eligible for this, we have to apply for it. We wanted to create a fair process for the application to help us determine which roads we would be applying for. So this particular policy, along with the Paser study that we previously received a grant for and initiated, is, is the process that we will use to help guide what roads we apply for some of those county funds.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve of the resolution to adopt a residential road improvement project participation policy. Members, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry, we gotta do a roll call. Clerk Posey, we call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviana?
Yes. The resolution is adopted, six to zero. Moving on to item nineteen, we have a request to approve a resolution on the abatement of a public nuisance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Aloya, do you have some background on this for us?
Yes, I, I met with Mr. Tomlinson, who's dealing with this matter along with Joe Maples, our building official. This is an issue that's been going on since two thousand eighteen. This, these residents have failed to maintain their property to the extent that we believe that the house is a safety and welfare issue. I believe that you have some pictures that were put before you, which shows that there's a large, I believe it's a billboard cover, which is covering the roof. The roof is, has been in a state of disrepair for a long period of time. The building has suffered water damage. Despite a district court case, which gave these individuals plenty of time to fix the repairs that the building officials have outlined, due to the state of disrepair for the house. And in the court process, I believe they were given over a year to fix them. It was not resolved, and the fact is, the district court judge simply gave them a fine. So at this point, the township is moving forward to a nuisance abatement lawsuit. And essentially, what that is, is we will file a lawsuit, Mr. Tomlinson will proceed in this matter, to require them to abate the nuisance. Now, I understand that the resident has come before you and said that certain things were fixed. We believe that is unproven. Despite our, our best efforts to prove, prove that, have the resident prove that, that is not proven, and we believe that these pictures show that that's not the case. The house is inhabitable. So certainly, in that case, they have the right to defend our request to declare a public nuisance, and they have the ability to show those defenses in, in the court of law. We believe that this is a necessary action to, and it's a health and safety issue. And I'm available for any questions. I know Mr. Maples, who's been dealing with it, is here as well to answer any questions.
Mr. Maples, I'm going to ask you to step up to the mic, and I have a couple of questions.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and Board members.
Good evening, Mr. Maples. So you have been dealing with this since the onset of the problem, correct?
That is correct.
Has any part of the problem been resolved to the, with the building department?
Not that we are aware of, no.
Has any permit been pulled?
There have been permits pulled. Currently, there are no permits outstanding.
All of them expired without being called for any sort of inspections to know whether or not anything has been done inside the building?
That is correct.
At this time, there's still a large tarp over the roof that would allow presumably the elements, animals, and anything else to get underneath the tarp?
That is correct.
That's all I have for the moment. Anybody else have questions, or either the attorney or Mr. Maples?
Mr. Maples, you have, you feel confident that you've gave them ample of time, amount of time, to resolve all these problems?
Yes, this originally started in two thousand eighteen. It is now two thousand and twenty-one, so that's little, almost two and a half years.
Since the first problem, the, the first violation, did anything even get solved after the first violation?
Uh, no.
And that was when?
That was in two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
There was a permit pulled by a company to do the restoration work for the damage inside the house, the, the water damage, including insulation that need to be replaced, drywall that need to be replaced. And then shortly after that, it was canceled by the contractor. The owner subsequently took out a permit just to do the roof, so we have no knowledge of any of the work inside being done and the condition that it could cause with possible mold and other deterioration of structural items.
Do you know how many people are occupying the house?
Not exactly. We believe there's two.
No children?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So at this time, we're unaware of any children living in the home. At least none that we're aware of. Is this a threat to public safety beyond those individuals that inhabit the house?
Um, probably not.
Okay.
Well, I, I disagree with that statement. As you can see, this tarp covers the points of ingress and egress out of the house. So, I mean, I know that you're saying, thinking, the residents, but anyone who attempts to leave or enter that home, and that may be members of the public, invitees that they have in their home, that's a threat, because that, that is, that is a safety hazard, for sure. They're covering windows, they're covering doors, and, and that should not, that's, that's a violation of code.
But it's private property, privately owned?
It is.
And the public is not at risk unless they choose to enter of their own accord, the private property?
Sure. But if there's a fire at the, at the location, or there's EMS that needs to enter the home?
I, I can understand it would be a risk to those in the home, who own the home or are, or are living in the home or in, in the home.
Or, or if there's an EMS person trying to enter the home, or a fire, or a fire department trying to enter the home, or a police officer, those are public people that may have to, may be called to the home.
Thank you.
A delivery person, something like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Maples, that home is not part of a subdivision. It's just a standalone, if I understand it on twenty-three?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
I guess I got another question to ask Mr. Maples. To my recollection, the tarp is totally over the house, even after these pictures were taken. I think there's... So that brings me to my next question. How could that house and how could the inhabitants of that house get any ventilation successfully through that house? The way that tarp is?
They, they can't get any natural ventilation. They can't get any ventilation for their plumbing system either. The plumbing, plumbing sister, system requires ventilation to properly flush toilets and to have the, the traps work properly. There's a possibility of the sewer system sucking the traps dry, which would allow methane gas to come into the house also, which is a deadly gas.
So actually, it's, it's health and safety to the residents of that house?
That is correct.
So even if they had friends that might want to spend the weekend with them, or they have children, somebody could seriously get ill in that house or even die in that house?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. Aloya, just so we understand what we're voting on here today. We're not here to declare whether or not that house is or is not a public nuisance, but merely to send it to a court, to take it to court and have a judge make that determination and give the resident the opportunity to prove that actions have been taken inside the house that would mitigate all of the problems that we've been trying to take care of, have them take care of.
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question for Mr. Maples. You indicated that there were, in the memo, I believe it was indicated, that there were complaints received by neighbors. Are those complaints that were channeled through your department?
There has been numerous complaints about the condition of the house, both the front yard and the rear yard.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Has every so-called safety issue been discussed already? So that you're, that everyone's aware of? From the general counsel's positioning, from the building department as well?
My, my understanding from Mr. Tomlinson is that district court case, and I'm sure you're familiar with these, there's a, there was an ordinance case to try to get them to abate these conditions, and it was explained, and they were given ample opportunity. In fact, you know, if we know Judge Shepard, he tries to give people every opportunity to correct the situation. So my understanding, there were three extensions, three, three-month extensions in order to allow these people to do, to, to fix the problem. In the end, they were not fixed, and Judge Shepard just kind of threw up his hands and gave him a fine and said, you're gonna have to do, to the township, you're gonna have to deal with this in some other way. So that's really what happened.
Is the problem really just the roof and the tarp? Is, is that a fair statement?
No, that, that's not. I, I mean, the tarp creates a lot of problems. The main one is it's blocking the ingress and egress in case of emergency. You can't get out, that's a violation of the Michigan Building Code, residential code. The other things, it, like I said, regarding the plumbing system, the methane gas. There's no light or ventilation, that is, natural light or natural ventilation that is allowed in the house. The roof, there's possible mold. We, we don't know the exact condition of the house. And the other health issues that may result because of that, and any other structural damage that could have occurred to structural members because of that.
Before, just for clarity, before you ask your next question, could you go back for us and, and tell us how this problem first came about? And give us a little bit of the history on it?
Back in two thousand and eighteen, there, there was a permit issued, actually, for a water damage. So at some, some point, somehow, water got in. The water restoration company came in, applied for the permit. They gave us a detailed list of all the work that needed to be done. Shortly after that, the permit was canceled. There was a request by the contractor to cancel the permit. He is allowed to do that, it's his permit, so we canceled the permit based off of his request. Shortly after that, the homeowner did come in and request a permit for the new roof, and which we issued that, I think it was in two thousand nineteen. There was no work, or no, very little progress on that. And we also got several complaints for all of the debris around from the tear-off of that roof. We had the permit actually expired, so we had gone out there and talked to the owners to try to see what the cause was, and there was different answers, rain, weather, and things like that. So she actually got another permit issued, which still, there was more work that was being done, but it was very, very, very slowly. No inspections were ever called for. That permit actually expired again. And that brings us, because of COVID, there was some extensions given to her because there was no work being allowed. We also took her to court because of the lack of progress, as Mr. Aloya has told you about, and the judge had given her several extensions, and to no avail. Typically, a roof like this, some companies do it in one day. Other companies, you know, take a couple of days or a week, but it should not take two and a half years to do a roof.
Do we know what originally caused the roof damage?
Water damage. Don't know exactly what the water damage was from.
Could have been a storm.
Could have been a storm.
Could have been a lightning strike, could have been anything that opened up the hole. Okay, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Trustee Cusmano.
No, no problem, Mr. Chairman. Is it possible that we're trying to avoid Judge Shepard by not reopening? Is it possible to reopen that case, or is that case closed with prejudice?
It's closed, but with the, with the ordinance violation cases, you know, they're a misdemeanor, right? So typically, what happens in those cases is, if they're found responsible, they either get a fine, or they can get jail time potentially, or some sort of remedy under the misdemeanor. But through the course of those cases, the township and other municipalities do the same thing, try to work with the property owner to correct the problem in order to lessen the fine or lessen the penalty. And most residents, I would say ninety-nine percent of the residents, will correct the problem, allow, go through the permit process, fix the problem, it gets corrected to avoid the penalty at the end. That didn't work in this situation. So there's really no use in reopening the criminal, the, the misdemeanor or issuing a new misdemeanor ticket, because we're gonna be in the same place. We already tried that, it didn't work, and so the only remedy at this point would be to declare a public nuisance.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned about the, the power of the township being brought to bear on a citizen who may be under duress or dire circumstances. Has there been any communication with the homeowner regarding special circumstances or reasons why she hasn't, they haven't placed a roof, a new roof on? Or any excuse given?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know if Mr. Maples knows of any.
There, there has been some delays. There's been some attempts, saying that plywood was put down. The fasteners that they were given by the roofing company weren't the right ones, and they actually backed themselves out, and they wouldn't hold, which I've never heard of anything like that ever happening in all of my years of construction, both as a contractor and as a building official. So there hasn't been anything other that, that I know of that has been given except for that.
Any other welfare issues that haven't been discussed already?
No, I think we've discussed them all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzmato.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear, and I know you said it, but I just want to make sure I thoroughly understand. So this resolution would just still allow the homeowner to provide proof? Um, as she had indicated at the podium, that she believed it, it did pass or qualify for everything that we had requested. But, um, our building inspector and attorneys believe otherwise. So it just allows her the, the, uh, opportunity to provide the substantial proof if, uh, and then it can be reversed, correct? Or no action would be taken then at that point?
I, I believe that the judge would deal with this case. Um, obviously, there's a greater penalty at the end if it's created a public nuisance. The, the property could be, the building could be knocked down. I, I believe judges in this county do give the homeowner the fair opportunity to potentially correct it if it's possible. I, I don't know what judge will do in this situation, but it's just like anything else. You'll have a discovery period. Uh, the court will attempt every effort to resolve the case before it's a final disposition. And if it cannot be done and the nuisance, uh, must be declared, then the court will make that decision whether or not it is a nuisance.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, it's my understanding that we're authorizing litigation to commence.
Correct.
Which, which monies, for the defense of which could be used to resolve the, or abate the nuisance or the problems of safety and welfare. I would move that the board, uh, table this for a period of two weeks and allow the homeowner to let that sink in. Because your, the position will not be enhanced by continuing not to satisfy the requirements of the township. I make the motion to table this for one period for the next meeting.
All right.
I'll support that.
Uh, item 19. I think that's a, a fair and reasonable approach. Hopefully, the homeowner can bring all of the proofs she claims, uh, to the building department, and the building department has the opportunity to verify any of those claims. Um, if that doesn't happen, we'll be back here at the next meeting, taking up this issue again.
I, I just got, and I appreciate what Mr. Kuzmato is doing, but I got one question, maybe the legal. I, I, I got big concerns about a tarp being over a house that should have ventilation. You got methane gases and stuff. Let's just say we did, we did a two-week run on this and try to settle it, and something really negative happened to that property. Where does it leave us?
Well, I mean, we do have immunities, but I will tell you that we've taken every enforcement action possible.
It sounds like you have.
And, and I think my understanding also is we've had a very difficult time getting the opportunity to inspect. We do have our building codes for a reason. Those are health and safety, welfare issues. Um, we may, through the course of this case, have the court, if, if, if the board allows us to proceed and we can't resolve this, uh, we may be able to get an order from the court to allow us to inspect the property, which is important, because there's a lot of claims being made without any substantiation. Uh, this was a flood in a house, and there could be mold. There could be other issues which we think are important. So I think the board has to understand, we have a building code for a reason. We have building officials for a reason. Residents in this township must abide by that. They must pull permits. They must get inspections. That's what the, what the law is. So we're not trying to over-police this. I think we're trying to get the resident to do what is right for their own health and safety and welfare and for those people, including fire, police, and other EMS who may have to access the property, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to also comment that there's a component of this illegal fees to the township, which if they could be avoided, I think in the interest of fiscal conservatism, should be avoided. Therefore, I stand by my motion to table, which has garnered support, and I ask for a vote.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing done. We have a motion to table, um, by Trustee Kuzmato, supported by Trustee Nevers. Correct? Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Ma'am, I, I hope you will take the opportunity to talk with our building super, uh, official and correct, start correcting the problems at your home.
One quick question on that. Will this come back in two weeks?
Yes.
It will. Mr. Maples will give us an update. All right, moving on to, I assume we don't have to do anything with the other motions since we tabled it. Um, moving on to item 20. We have a request to approve the pre-approved procurement recommendations for 2022. Is there a motion? So move. There's a second?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board Members. The purchasing policy requires competitive bidding of procurements that individually or aggregately exceed $5,000 in one fiscal year. Budgeted procurements that meet at least one of the competitive bid exceptions as defined in the purchasing policy may be presented to the board for approval using the pre-approved procurement process. This process allows the board to collectively review and approve procurements that will not be competitively bid in the upcoming year, rather than having each item come before the board on an individual basis. The items listed on the spreadsheet, including in the board, included in the board packet, are being recommended for board approval. The justification, estimated expenditure, and contract term for each of the procurements is provided. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the clerk's office, I suppose. PSI for the election materials, is that, it's described as a sole source vendor. Do all the other townships use the same vendor?
That's correct.
So Cindy Berry over in Chesterfield uses PSI?
Um.
I mean, if you know.
I would say the majority, surrounding majority. When we, uh, attend the County Clerks Association, PSI is the representative there that works with all of us to, to, uh, make sure that we're on the same page with the Bureau of Elections, the county, and the local government, so that everything that's printed, um, is the correct size and feeds through the printers, through the, uh, tabulators, and details such as just the mailing envelopes. We've tried, um, two separate vendors because we've had, this was many years ago before I got here. Uh, one gave, uh, a lower price on an envelope, and one gave a lower price on the ballot, and the ballot actually wouldn't fit in the envelope, so we had to have everything redone. So that's why everyone channels everything through PSI, because they do everything from start to finish that requires us to print and mail and tabulate.
And that rate is negotiated individually with each township, or is it?
Based on quantity and volume.
Okay. Is there a schedule that's through the association of clerks that they agree to? Or is it, is it just?
It's individual.
It's individual. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzmato.
Any other questions on the motion? Hearing done. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the pre-approved procurement recommendations for 2022. Members, please vote. And that motion passes six to zero. All right, moving on to public comment. Uh, we have, these are for non-agenda items. So if anyone in the gallery wishes to speak, please approach the microphone on the right. Uh, please remember, there is a three-minute time limit, and please state your name and address for the record. Also, if you are participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand, and you will be called upon.
Hi, my name is Matt Elward, 48310 Anthony Drive. I just, uh, want to take this opportunity to thank, um, Trustee LaCito for helping us with our 5G issue. Um, we've received a call from, um, Lisa McLean today saying that she had heard that the, um, 5G poll has been canceled. However, um, she has, uh, some issues that we don't have it in writing um, in order to, um, have that, um, confidence that it really is going to be canceled. So she's pursuing that and, um, talked to, uh, Trustee LaCito that, um, they're pursuing the actual, um, cancellation, um, you know, the official cancellation of the, uh, poll. So I just want to thank the board for the kind words that you, uh, gave us last week as well, and your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else who wishes to speak on non-agenda items? Is there anyone digitally participating who wishes? Nobody? Okay. Uh, just real quick, Mr. Elward, I have the, a copy of the canceled permit. Trustee LaCito is on vacation. Otherwise, I'm sure he would have sent it to you. I sent it over to his email, but he's in Disney right now, so. But I, if you, if you hold on, I probably have it on my, on my phone, and I can show you a copy. So.
Thank you.
Um, all right, moving on to board comments. Trustee Oliver.
Um, Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, the board, the employees of Macomb Township, and also the residents of Macomb Township. And that's it? Pretty quick, isn't it?
Trustee Kuzmato.
I'd just like to state that I'm really glad to hear that the 5G poll has been canceled. I was considering contacting the residents on Anthony Drive and agreeing to sign whatever petition or physically picket a, um, a location of the, um, the carrier. I thought that that would be the only way to bring to attend, public attention the issue. So I'm glad to hear that that resolved favorably. Um, that's a win, and it should be, uh, savored. Um, I just want to, uh, say that my comments and questions in no way reflect my cynicism as to the professionalism of the employees of the Macomb Township or our legal counsel. However, I think it's important that we avoid litigation because I think that those sums can be spent, uh, to pave a sidewalk or, um, open a park or do other things. So if we can avoid litigation, we should do so. But I will say one thing that I'm prophesizing here. If there isn't movement and some significant improvement in this property, I can almost guarantee that I think the vote will be 6-0 to initiate litigation. So you, this is the last chance, in my opinion, at least from my standpoint as a trustee. We give every opportunity to, uh, homeowner to make things right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzmato.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes, I would just like to say congratulations, and I'm very, very happy that the poll has been canceled, and, uh, you won't be submitted to all of that radiation. It's, it may not be forever, but at least it's a couple of years down the road at least. So congratulations on that. And just, uh, everyone have a wonderful, blessed, and safe Thanksgiving, and enjoy your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Treasurer Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that, uh, I'm sure everybody in the, in the community of Macomb Township has a lot to be thankful for. This has been, uh, one year since our first meeting, at least my first meeting, and Supervisor Viviano and Trustee Kuzmato's first meeting. And, uh, I've, over this past year, uh, learned a lot more about what I need to be grateful for. You know, representing such a tremendously, uh, great community like Macomb Township. The people that live in this community are, uh, make this job, uh, a pleasure. And then I also want to be thankful for the people I've met that work at Macomb Township, the, uh, the employees, the department heads, my coworkers, the people that serve on boards. All of you guys have, um, given me a lot to be thankful for as well. So I want to wish everybody at the township, everyone in our community, a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
Um, I too would like to say that I am, uh, very grateful that that worked out for you. Something to be thankful for. Uh, this Thanksgiving is, uh, with the 5G. I know, uh, how passionate all of you were about that, and it didn't fall on deaf ears. We were just doing some work behind the scenes. But at the end of the day, I think it ended exactly where you wanted it to be in, uh, us as well. So I'm glad that did work out, and, um, I thank you for continuing to communicate with us, and I appreciate you, um, acknowledging that at the end. Um, so Happy Thanksgiving. Um, and I'm thankful for, uh, the, the employees at the township as well. Um, my first four years here were a little rough, and we, we were family together, um, through that time period. And I think we can all say, thankfully, with this new board, this past year has gone, um, much smoother, and I am thankful for that, and I'm thankful for all the friends and family that I created here in the township over that time.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Um, a couple of announcements from, uh, everybody, please remember, we have the Holiday Fest Tree Lighting, uh, which is Friday, December 3rd at 6:30 PM. And there's gonna be, uh, music, live reindeer, crafts, um, and if we're lucky, a showing by Santa himself, so let's all cross our fingers for that. Um, also, I want everybody to know that we are seeking applications, um, for a future vacancy on the Macomb Township Planning Commission. The positions are three-year appointments. They meet twice a month, uh, on Tuesday evenings. It's the second and?
First and third.
First and third Tuesdays. Uh, you must be a resident of Macomb Township, and if you're interested, uh, or you know someone who's interested, someone who has, uh, some, maybe some background or some experience in the planning departments, uh, please contact my office. There's an application available on the website, and you can return it to, uh, the supervisor's office. Um, I also wish to extend my gratitude to all the township employees and my thanks on this Thanksgiving. I think it's been a great year. In fact, uh, Trustee LaCito decided to celebrate his first year by not being here. I should have thought of that myself. Um, no, it's been a, it's been a, it's been a, a ride, but it's also been a lot of fun, and I, I've enjoyed the work. I've enjoyed, um, my colleagues, and I've especially, I'm grateful for the professionalism and that, that this board shows at every meeting. So I'm grateful to all of you. So that being said, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Kuzmato, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. This mo, this meeting is adjourned.